Good evening. I'd like to call City Council, City of San Bruno for budget study session to order. We can have roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Mayor Fransella.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Here.
If you can have Vice Mayor Ruane lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone wishing to address the council on any items not on the agenda under public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four. We'll conduct a study session review that recommended 2009, 2010 general fund, special revenue fund, enterprise fund, and capital improvement budget. Seeing Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're here tonight, as we do every year, to present the budget in detail to you for your consideration and for your eventual adoption. At this time, we have three budget study sessions scheduled. The first of those three is tonight, and it will be our intent to move through the operating budget tonight in its entirety, and then to take that up again if it's the council's pleasure on any aspects at our next meeting, which is now scheduled for Tuesday, June 16th. At that time, we will plan also to be prepared to initiate discussion with you regarding the enterprise funds budgets, water, waste, water, cable, and the other enterprises, as well as the capital improvement program budget. We have scheduled a third workshop, our study session, for Wednesday evening, June 17th, and these are all at 5:30 PM here in this room, to continue any and all discussion that the council may wish to entertain in advance and in consideration of your eventual consideration to act on approval of the budget, which is now currently scheduled for your regular meeting of June 23rd. As I indicated, our presentation tonight is intended to cover the general fund operating budgets, which includes most of the city's operating departments, and we will go through those departments tonight and the issues and the various aspects of this budget in a manner that is similar but not exactly the same to what we've done in previous years. What we're planning to do tonight is to walk through with you a detailed overview of the budget, in particular, the issues that have framed and have necessitated our response as we have developed this budget. And rather than have each of our individual operating departments speak to you directly, what we have determined would be more efficient and probably a more effective use of our time with you tonight is to ask for those departments that have the greatest direct service impact to residents to speak directly to you. We have four presentations tonight from the police department, the fire department, the community services department, and the community development department. As to a fifth area of the city's operations, Jim and I will present some comments regarding the administrative departments. And again, rather than having those directors individually speak to you, we will talk in one short segment about the various aspects of the city manager, city council, city clerk, city attorney, and human resource and finance departments. So with that, Jim and I will be trading off a little bit, and then we will move to the presentations by the department after we've given you a fairly detailed presentation that covers all of the important issues that frame the entirety of this budget. We would encourage you to ask us questions or provide any comments at any point. This is really intended to be your opportunity to dive in and to understand any and all aspects of this budget, and even if -- and even that, we are not going line by line through the budget. It's our hope that if you have any specific questions, that you will use either this or one of the other study sessions as an opportunity to allow us to make sure that you're completely clear on all of the various proposals. Again, this is a recommended budget, and I want to start by giving you an overview of where we've been over the last several months, both in the development of this budget as well as in managing the current year, the fiscal year '08-'09 budget, and the variety of issues impacting our ability to continue services in an environment of very severe, nearly catastrophic decline in all of our major revenue categories. This is a topic that has been in front of the city council on several previous occasions over the last several months. I will assume that you're relatively well-informed, but we would be remiss if we did not cover these topics carefully because of the very serious impact that the state of the economy and a variety of other issues are having, both on the city's overall revenue situation as well as on our continuing ability truly to meet the service needs of the residents of San Bruno. We've prepared a PowerPoint presentation, and it's our intent, in general terms, to walk through the information in the order that's presented here. So I will start with a quick overview of the 2008-2009 year. While many of our staff, myself, the finance director, I'm sorry, the administrative services director, our department directors, and many other members of our budget team have literally been focused nearly nonstop over the last several months since January on strategizing and developing response and developing the detail of this budget in an environment of unprecedented change and difficulty, there have been a lot of other things going on as well. And sometimes it's useful to take a little bit of time to remember that we actually accomplished quite a bit during 2008-2009. We'll be talking, as we go through this evening, about the various financial issues. But just for a moment, I'd like to remember that in the last year, we successfully implemented a pretty significant reorganization of departments and director positions in the city that was intended to reduce costs at the outset of 2008-2009. We eliminated a total of four and a half management positions last year. We hired two new directors who we've welcomed to San Bruno and to our organizational staff team, and we successfully implemented a reorganization of two of our very important service departments, our Parks and Recreation Services and our Library Services Department. Those two organizations are working together well and functioning as a consolidated departmental team. You completed review and approval of the general plan. I probably don't need to remind you how many years that was in the making. A very, very significant accomplishment, along with the initiation of our transit corridors in downtown, strategic planning process, which is intended to situate the city on a going-forward basis over the next period of years to attain its full potential in the physical development and the economic development opportunities that may present We completed a variety of capital projects. Some of them are listed on here, and there's a much longer list in the transmittal letter, which accompanies the budget that you have in front of you tonight. Overall, I think that we have made lasting improvements to San Bruno, to traffic and circulation safety, to the integrity and the operational capacity of our facilities, and to the appearance and the quality of our parks, and particularly our playgrounds. And lastly, on a kind of an upper-level review, we have not only been forced but have been very aggressive in the opportunity to take advantage of any and all funding opportunities that might be available to the city of San Bruno to allow us to continue projects and programs that are important to our residents despite financial constraints. As the council is aware, there are continuing to be opportunities for federal economic stimulus funds. We were successful in competitively participating in an opportunity to bring community development block grant funds to our library this year. And overall, this continues to be a very important aspect of the city's strategic initiatives to maintain services and capital improvements, even as our revenues are declining dramatically.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first slide that I would like to talk to you about is the all-fund summary, and just wanted to make a couple of comments. As the city manager indicated, the majority of the comments tonight are going to be related to the general fund, but wanted, as we started off, to give you a view of all of the major funds. You see on this slide, the general fund. We're looking at revenues equalling about 31.7 million. Expenditures, slightly less, 31.7. There's actually an $8,000 out of balance as far as the general fund is concerned. We do have a beginning fund balance while it is very small at 29,000. This does allow us to present to the council a recommended balanced budget for the general fund. Other things I wanted to just point out on this chart is we're showing a transfer out of the one-time reserve of $241,000. That is for one capital project that there's no other dedicated funding for. And when we talk about the capital projects at the next meeting, we'll talk more in detail about that. So that is the only use of reserves that are recommended in the budget. Just want to go down to the capital, I'm sorry, to the enterprise funds. You see that the revenues coming in are about $30 million, and just to kind of put in proportion, the enterprise accounts, 30 million, our general fund's about $31 million. So that shows the balance of those funds. So overall, there's about an 85, 83, 85 million budget between revenues and expenses when you include all of the funds, and it is that size budget that the council will be taking action on when the resolution is actually before the council. Just the next slide talks about the economic crisis that I think we have talked a great deal about, but just wanted to summarize again for the council some of the economic conditions that give rise to the negative aspects of the budget and the challenge the council has faced in coming up with a budget for '09-10. Home assessed values in San Bruno are declining, foreclosures are up, and the combination of those leads us to expect that our property tax revenue for next year is going to decline by almost $500,000 compared to the budget for '08-'09. We had anticipated that there might have been a slower drop-off in revenues, property tax revenues. We received information from the county for assessed values for next year, according to their determination, and San Bruno actually is facing one of the larger declines in assessed value in San Mateo County. So that is immediately and more quickly than we might have anticipated affecting our property tax revenues. We have talked a great deal about sales tax and the decline in sales tax. Our auto dealerships, the two auto dealerships in San Bruno represent about 12% of our total sales tax, and the sales for these dealerships are down about 27% from 2007. And the shops at Tanforan is the city's single largest source of sales tax revenue, and they are at about 30% of the total, and the sales tax receipts taken as a total for the shops at Tanforan is actually declining since 2007. We had the highest sales tax from Tanforan with the remodeling and the reopening, the redevelopment of Tanforan, but since that time, primarily because of the economic conditions, we have seen a decline in the sales tax. And we're expected overall in the budget to see a decline of about $865,000 in sales tax in '09-10 compared to the current year's budget. Hotel tax revenue, also after a period of quite a long period of higher revenues from hotel tax on a monthly basis over the last six months, we have seen a decline, and that will result in actually lower hotel tax in '09-10 than in the current year. Finally, from the economic crisis and the impacts of financing and private development, we have seen a significant slowdown in private development, both in large development projects and in home remodels and other typical building activity. And as a result, we're expecting a decline of almost $1.6 million in building permit revenues in '09-10. So that is the link between the economic environment and the budget that the council needs to consider. Here, more specifically, the major revenue categories of the city are taxes, franchises, use of money and property, allocations and other revenues, and then departmental revenues. And again, as really the economic conditions slide really shows, the decreases that we're facing are really in taxes. We're looking overall at taxes declining by about $1.5 million. There's an additional $1.1 million decrease in departmental revenues. The next slide shows those same categories of revenues, but just wanted to show over a longer period of time, going back to '05-'06, and you see the trend from this chart, the decline in taxes and the decline in departmental revenues that mirrors the decreases that were shown in the chart above. One thing I did want to indicate is the relative flatness of these revenues over a longer period of time. So it is not just the decrease that we're facing in this year, but we really have revenues that, over a long period of time, has been a challenge for the council to maintain services in light of what is really a very flat revenue base for the organization. What would point out one area of increase is the allocation of other revenues. Five years ago, the council directed that there be a cost allocation plan, and the overhead charges for primarily the general departments, general government departments, be allocated to other funds and departments, like redevelopment, like the enterprise accounts for their share of the overhead costs. And so that is why that trend line has increased over the longer period of time. Here we see, again, over a longer period of time, the taxes and building permit revenues and the hotel tax over, again, the five-year period, again, seeing the decline in the current year. You see a little bit of the volatility of the building permit fee. You see how it declined in '06-'07 and then backed up for two years. And again, those are the major development projects that have occurred in San Bruno that sort of drive that variance and volatility in building permits. Again, property tax over a period of time was up or was going in at least a positive trend. Sales taxes, I indicated, have been dropping off over the last several years. The budget of revenue to expenditure chart is just, again, to put together revenues and expenses, and the council well knows that it is a government code requirement. The council approved and adopted a balanced budget. And so you see that the lines for the budget are essentially on top of each other because they are balanced. In most of the prior period of time, there was actually at least a budget of either reserves or one-time revenues in order to balance that budget. And at the end of the day, when we were able to complete the year primarily because of salary savings, we haven't had to use those revenues in order to, reserves in order to balance the budget. But again, the council has directed or required that there be the balanced budget, and that has occurred, and we will, in fact, be recommending a budget for this year, a general fund budget that is balanced without the use of any reserves.
As Jim indicated, the current year budget, '09, I'm sorry, '08-'09, and it's indicated in the bar chart that you've just seen, we're expecting to achieve a balanced budget by the end of this year, June 30th, with a very small but positive year-end general fund balance of just over $20,000. That and the opportunity to present to you tonight a budget that is balanced despite these economic circumstances and the major effects on San Bruno's revenues. Our significant accomplishment is to present to you tonight a budget that is also balanced going into fiscal year '09-10. Beginning at the first quarter review of the current year's budget, staff brought to the council's attention the effects that we were beginning to see of the downturn in the economy. In the first instance, that occurred with the Lehman Brothers bankruptcy at the end of September, which resulted in an anticipated loss, a significant loss of investment earnings for the current year. Unfortunately, the situation had deteriorated by the second quarter review beginning in December, and the city council determined properly that it was important to take a careful look both at where revenues and expenditures were trending, but what needed to be done in order to achieve the result of a balanced budget by year end, because it was pretty clear that salary savings were no longer an opportunity for us to anticipate better-than-projected results by the end of the year. Council called for a study session that was held on January 12th of 2009, at which time we reviewed in detail the financial circumstances and our projections for the coming year, for '09-10. And at that time, the city council provided specific strategic direction for the development of the '09-10 budget. I'm pleased and proud to tell you tonight that we have met your direction, and not only are producing a budget that we can credibly represent to you as being balanced as to revenues and expenditures, but also that we have addressed the other items on the slide that's in front of you tonight that were the specific elements of your direction to us. Those included that the budget would not be balanced by the use of reserves, that we would adhere to a minimum reserve balance policy and use of reserves, that compensation for all employees would be frozen through June 30th, 2010, in order to give the city some flexibility and opportunity to address the serious downturn in revenues, that we establish an employee budget working committee to work with the budget staff to evaluate and recommend strategic initiatives to address the budget problem, and lastly, again, to evaluate any and all strategies available to increase revenues. Going back for a moment to the employee budget working committee, this is just one of the various techniques that we have used more heavily this year than in previous years, both to engage and to partner with employees as we've moved through this very difficult set of circumstances. The employee budget working committee has been meeting regularly since February, and when I say regularly, I mean nearly every single week. That forum has provided an opportunity for employees who, by the way, have self-selected, they've volunteered for this opportunity or this assignment because of their particular interest and the hope that their particular insight could provide an important contribution to this process. The working committee has provided an opportunity not only to discuss and evaluate proposed strategies, but to make sure that our employees are well and fully informed and that dialogue is incurring within all corners of our organization. I believe that that's been an effective and successful technique and has, again, demonstrated the commitment of our employees, along with their creativity and their real honest understanding of the situation that we face in managing this organization, despite the fact that, and I would be remiss to not mention, that our employees, like our residents, like everybody else, virtually everywhere we look these days, are uncertain and probably somewhat anxious about the ability that they have on an ongoing basis to provide for their families and to adequately manage their own personal lives within these very difficult circumstances. I mentioned that one of the directions that the city council gave was to evaluate strategies to increase revenues, and that is the first of the several components of, strategic components of this budget that we'll be discussing tonight. The city council has already taken action, or the first of the necessary few actions, to place a measure on the November 9 ballot to increase the transient occupancy tax rate from the current 10% level to 12%. Now, you saw on the previous slides that transient occupancy tax, or TOT, was a line that relatively at the lower part of the chart. It's not a big revenue item, particularly since 9/11 and 2001, but it is an important one, and it is a unique opportunity, as many of our colleagues up and down the peninsula are looking to this election as well for that particular type of a ballot measure. We believe that this is an important item to pursue at this time. At the city council's consideration, we have not included any revenues from the potential success of this ballot measure in this budget. At the minimum, I think that's a prudent way of hedging against what might be inevitably around the next corner in terms of additionally deteriorating economic circumstances. As indicated on the slide, we anticipate the opportunity to achieve as much as $270,000 in additional new revenue, and again, this measure will not be decided until the November '09 ballot. We have included in this budget additional revenues resulting from a second action already taken by the city council, and that is to increase parking fines to an amount that is more consistent within our region and is anticipated to generate as much as an additional $50,000. Again, that amount is included in our revenue projections. Before we continue with the various additional strategies and the overall content of this budget, I want to sort of place a caveat to the whole of this budget process and to simply remind the city council that this is continuing to be an evolving set of circumstances. Even as we spoke to you on January 12th and projected a Even as we spoke to you on January 12th and projected a revenue situation six months hence for the June 30th, 2009 situation, we have been surprised and frankly increasingly concerned about where revenues are going and what, how long and how difficult this economic situation might continue to be. As the city council is aware, the state of California is, has been and continues to be in virtual financial chaos or turmoil. The state was unsuccessful despite approving a budget about a month ago, was unsuccessful in adequately resolving a deficit at the state level of as much as $40 billion. The governor has recently, and as recently as last Friday, been talking about the additional steps that the state may need to take in order to balance or address its budget problem. And the items that I have on the paper here are really only representative of the ones that, that we know something about right now. And in fact, it continues to be a very challenging and evolving situation and one that may not fully play out for some period of time, hopefully not a long period of time, but probably within the next 30 days. The most significant threat that is currently on the horizon is the state activating the property tax borrowing provisions of 2004's Proposition 1A, which allows the state to borrow up to 8% of city property tax, a cumulative total of $2 billion statewide, and just over $800,000 for the city of San Bruno. That loss of property tax revenue would be in addition to the amounts that Jim spoke to you about earlier, a few minutes ago. At this time, and because this is a constitutionally protected revenue and one that can only be taken by borrowing at the state level, with that borrowing to be repaid within three years, I'm recommending that this additional impact, if it is implemented, be addressed by use of one-time reserves that the city does have, would certainly be reluctant to use, but would then be identified as a note receivable, and as that repayment occurs, would not create the situation of an extreme variability in general fund revenues on a year-for-year basis. A proposal to take gas tax is a little bit more difficult, and at this point, this information is, is evolving even as, as we're sitting here speaking tonight. I don't have an accurate number for you, but we've estimated a, an amount that is very nearly the total of the gas tax revenues that are put into our general fund on a regular basis to fund street maintenance, routine street maintenance-related activities. And I'm not talking about major capital improvements, I'm talking about the basic day-to-day operational items, simply of patching potholes, monitoring safety conditions on streets, repairing various interferences to safe traffic flow, and providing for a very limited staff workforce that is housed in our streets maintenance division. A hit of $600,000 or whatever that amount might be would be very, very difficult for us to address. And at this point, I have to say, because this information is so new, this potential threat is not addressed in the budget that is in front of you tonight, but would require an additional extreme action on the part of the city if and when it occurs. Lastly, there's been talk for months now about the possibility of the state taking or withholding in some manner redevelopment tax increment, and while not a direct threat to the city's operating budget, it is something that would reduce the effectiveness of our ability to pursue economic development and planning-related activities as it relates to the redevelopment project area. And as the city council is clearly aware, we rely pretty heavily in our operational budget on contribution from the redevelopment agency based on the conduct of routine redevelopment-related activities on a day-to-day basis.
You have before you the revenue and expense totals for the current budget, the estimated actual, and the proposed budget for nine, 10. And you can see the decline from the current, from the current budget to what we actually are estimating we're going to receive in the current year, and then the further declines for oh nine, 10. So with the discussion as far as the reductions in revenues and the various actions the city has taken, the slide in front of you is the actual outcome for the general fund of revenues and expenditures and the impact on the fund balance. So there is about a $2.5 million reduction in revenues, there's about a $2.2 million reduction in expenditures, and again, the budget is within $8,000 of absolute balance with a recommendation that that $8,000 end up being a reduction in the fund balance. And again, in looking at the chart, fund balance is really the checking account balance. You see there's a very small number that we're projecting for the, for the end of this year in the checking account, which will, general fund checking account, which will be the beginning balance for next year, and even the smaller amount in the checking account of $21,000 at the end of next year. In looking at oh nine, 10 budgeted expenditures, this is a breakdown by category of the proposed expenditures for oh nine, 10. One thing that caught my eye was if you look at personnel services, and again, this is salaries, and the various benefit costs that go with the salaries, is showing in the current year budget, it's 65% of the total. And there have been discussions in the past how we are a service organization and the bulk of the general fund expenditures, our personnel costs, personnel who provide the various services that we provide to the community. What caught my eye was we, we had shown the council this for the current year back in January, and at that point, the personnel costs were over 70%. And so the impact of the personnel reductions that is proposed in the budget actually drops that percentage down to the 65%. So again, the bulk of the expenditures are personnel-related. You can see other items, contract services and supplies and equipment, only 3% and 4%. Intergovernmental charges, we pay the county for animal control services in the general fund, and there's fire dispatch. And then there's the internal allocations, which is really the overhead, and 22% a relatively low number for all of the overhead for insurance, for vehicle and self-insurance and so forth. So that is the, that is the percentage breakdown of the proposed budget by, by classification Looking at essentially the same information, but looking at it on a departmental basis, you see going down the right-hand column, if you compare it to the budget in oh eight, oh nine, every department is less in the oh nine, 10 proposed budget compared to oh eight, oh nine, except for the city clerk's office. And the, there's a, there is a good explanation. We have included in the city clerk's budget the cost for the municipal election that'll occur in November of oh nine. In the prior year's budget in oh eight, oh nine, there was no municipal election. So that is an additional cost. If it were not for that, there would be no increases, and like I said, the, the other departments and overall, you see the $267,000 was what the expenditure side of the budget was reduced by the council in oh eight, oh nine, and then you see the $1.6 million reductions that are shown in each of the, each of the departments.
So next part of our presentation, we're going to walk through, I talked earlier about the one strategic component of this year's budget development, and that was the identification of new revenue opportunities. Clearly, there is more work to do in that category, and none of which at this point could I recommend to you as being a significant contributing opportunity for the oh nine, 10 budget, but an area that really will require our continuing attention as we move through and continue to address challenging financial circumstances. For the year oh nine, 10, how did we then get to a balanced budget with the significant reductions in revenues? The primary, a primary strategic component of the plan that we're presenting to you tonight is the reduction of 10 and 1/2 full-time equivalent positions across the organization. The positions that we're speaking to you about tonight are all currently vacant. We had, as part of our oh nine budget, oh eight, oh nine budget plan, had frozen all vacancies and have strictly limited hiring during the last six months, so that we have now 10 and 1/2 positions funded in the general fund that we are recommending be permanently completely eliminated. That is the total number of positions that are currently existing vacant in the general fund, although we do have, I believe, three positions in the enterprise funds that we'll be talking to you about at a subsequent study session that we may, in fact, proceed with filling. As it relates to the general fund again, though, we are proposing the elimination of, of all positions currently vacant. The process that we used in evaluating the overall development of the strategy, the overall strategy, first and foremost, looked at these vacant positions as a means of avoiding the more dramatic effect on individuals within the organization who, as I mentioned earlier, are continuing to rely on their employment as a means of providing basic care and support to their families. It was a strong priority, it continues to be a strong priority, and advice from the employee budget working committee, that we work as hard as possible to avoid layoffs, and that is, in fact, what we have attempted to do in producing this budget. At this point, I could not guarantee that layoff will not be necessary, but the budget that we're presenting to you tonight does not, at this time, anticipate layoff of any filled position. The positions that we proposed to eliminate, therefore, occurred in a random or a haphazard manner across the organization. They were the ones that happened to be vacant and that were held vacant, but there is no real specific strategic analysis here that said X department should be reduced by this number of employees. The way it, it has worked is that we have five vacant positions in the police department, and all five of those are proposed for elimination, including three sworn police officer positions. The chief will be talking to you later about how, what we did in evaluating reductions within his department and what he anticipates as the effect of that, and I, I won't go, go into those details at this time. In the community development department, one and 1/2 full-time equivalent positions. In the public services department, the equivalent of 1/2 position funded in the general fund. And in the community services department, among the several divisions, three full-time positions. Total value of that reduction of staff positions totals approximately $900,000. Departmental reductions then proceeded from there across the board in all departments. My initial direction to staff, to the department directors in preparing their budgets this year was to use a reduction in the magnitude of 7 and 1/2% of their total costs as a, as a yardstick to determine what we would be accepting as a first level of review. In some departments, that was easier than others, again, because of the, the way that vacant positions happened to fall. Others had relatively larger contract services that were carefully evaluated for elimination, and overall, we came back with a laundry list of reductions across departments that were carefully evaluated to determine what were the most viable and what really were, even in this fiscal, in this environment of fiscal challenges, what did we anticipate might be best sustained on a going-forward basis. The departmental reductions are summarized on this paper, and in total, they, they add to over $1.5 million on a across-the-board citywide basis. Significant reductions to part-time hourly salaries in our program delivery, primarily in the recreation and library departments. Overtime in the fire department, management leave, buyout provision to be discontinued for the current year, I'm sorry, for the, for the coming year, supplies across all of the organization in a total amount of $300,000. And again, while this looks like a large number, there are a lot of operational requirements in the, in the various departments across the board. So this is a significant hit to many of our departments. Contracted services, there is a significant reduction in the building division of the community development department, which the director will speak to you about during his presentation, as well as a variety of other contracted services. Across the board, we looked carefully at staff training and development meetings and conferences, and actually, the line items that remain in the various departments, I should, I hope, demonstrate to you that we've taken every advantage to minimize those to really the minimal levels possible. As a note, I would say that in a time of staff reductions and the challenges and demands of an ever-increasing complex environment that, that we must manage and the increasing demands for services, I would say that staff training and, and development is an area that, that we need to be paying careful attention to, and I regret that it's, it's necessary to make even what is, in the grander scheme of things, a relatively modest but very significant The, the other significant item on this list is the internal allocations. And while this is not a direct service expenditure that appears as a line item in each of our operating budgets, it is one that has historically and continues to be important to us. It includes, for example, the amount that is annually transferred from each of our operating departments as an expenditure amount into our equipment reserve. I think the city council is very well aware of how significant the availability of those resources has been on a going, on a continuing basis. resources has been on a going, on a continuing basis, that we have not had to scramble and to significantly avoid or defer major replacement of things like fire engines or backhoes when those items are no longer serviceable. We have done a careful job to evaluate our equipment reserve and the amounts that we transfer annually, and we believe that the reduction in our contributions across all departments totaling $180,000 is something, in fact, that can be sustained without irreparable damage to the equipment reserve. Similarly, we have reduced our allocations to building facilities as well as to our self-insurance fund, again, after only a careful evaluation of operating requirements and with a continuing assessment of the need to reduce everything across our organization. Again, these reductions totaled to over $1.5 million across all of our departments. Just to give you a first highlight of some of the effects that we're going to hear more about in just a moment from the departments as to the impact of these various expenditure reductions, the bar chart that you have in front of you shows continual reduction in staffing levels organization-wide that has occurred over the last several years. You see the bars, although they are relatively tall, they are sloping and trending downward without any spikes. What that means is that reductions that have been made in previous years have generally been permanently eliminated and not replaced. While our staffing and the positions that we employ has varied, and there has been some change during these intervening years, what you see on an overall basis is a clear trend downward. And in fact, the next slide more specifically portrays this. Last year, in our budget, we talked a little bit with you about the comparison to a time 30 years ago when life was certainly simpler, service demands, I think, were somewhat less, but in the immediate post-proposition 13 era, many of our departments and many of our operations were actually staffed at a level that is higher than current and that we anticipate into the future. This chart clearly shows that, and we've attempted to illustrate this a little bit more fully by showing you where we have specific data that documents or illustrates the demand for services. You can see that literally these departments are experiencing an increase in demand at the same time as they are delivering services with a significantly lower number of staff. At this point, we are intending to move in the presentation to the four departments that I mentioned earlier, so this might be a good time to stop and see if you have any questions.
Questions, if there's any questions from council. Anyone here have questions so far that they want to ask the administration? Okay, then we'll move on, we'll hear from Police Chief Telford.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. In population, San Bruno is the fifth largest city in Samatéo County, and the police department is the fifth busiest law enforcement agency in the county. A recent report by the California Police Chiefs Association cited a 2007 FBI survey that listed a national per capita average as two police officers per 1,000 population. In California, that averages 1.6 police officers per 1,000 population, and in San Bruno, we're at 1.06 per 1,000 population. Although we're the fifth busiest agency in Samatéo County, we're the 15th when it comes to per capita police officers per population. In 2008, our officers handled 31,980 calls for service, which is approximately about the same volume as we had last year. Our response time to emergency calls still averages under four minutes. The budget before you tonight was prepared with three guiding principles, and one is our paramount, is to provide community safety. The second principle was to maintain staff morale and employee retention, and to preserve our ability to respond to our schools and growing crime trends such as criminal street gangs. This year's budget called for the elimination of three police officer positions, one public safety dispatcher, and the executive assistant. Each position was reviewed to determine if the department could sustain the vacancy and the associated consequences. The department has managed these vacancies for the majority of the year in anticipation of the need for expenditure reductions. In existing staff, the department has absorbed these additional duties in a commendable fashion, with little impact to our service to the community. As a point of reference, the 2002-2003 budget started with 70 full-time employees and 51 sworn personnel. This year's proposal has 61 employees with only 45 sworn personnel. The police department establishes minimum staffing levels to ensure there will always be an adequate number of officers on the street at any given time. There are six patrol shifts currently used by the department. Four of these shifts run at a minimum staffing level. And because there are fewer officers on the shift, each officer has to handle a greater number of calls for service. This means there is little time to conduct proactive police patrols, less time to respond to the quality-of-life complaints that are so frequent at our department, and these include traffic and parking complaints, vehicle vendor complaints, and animal complaints such as barking dogs and dogs in the park. The loss of three police officer positions will also mean the department will have fewer resources available to respond to a growing crime trend or pattern. As you can imagine, we're currently experiencing an increase in property crimes, and we're also experiencing a slight increase in domestic violence, this is likely due to the economic times. Last year, the department formed a team of officers to address an increase in gang-related criminal activity. In the four months the gang team was active, and that included all of our officers at the department working on this increase in crime. The officers came in contact and validated 106 gang members, conducted 116 probation compliance checks, made 81 arrests, and took several weapons off the street, including three firearms and one sawed-off shotgun. Our ability to deploy officers in this and similar roles will be significantly reduced. The community will likely experience some reduction in service. Our response times to non-emergency calls will likely be delayed, and there may have to be an increased need to rely on our online reporting system. Recently, there was a victim of a vehicle burglar who was waiting for an officer to investigate this crime. Officers were tied up on higher priority calls, and it took us over an hour to even free somebody up. That citizen didn't wait and elected to use our online reporting service. Our response times to these non-emergency calls will likely be increased. Several of our calls for service require that we send multiple officers to a single call. We recently had a report of domestic violence in progress, and the only officer available to respond was the shift sergeant. We had to break an officer from across town on another call to go and assist that sergeant in safely handling that call. Department will continue to utilize all available resources, that includes myself, the command staff, or mutual aid from South San Francisco or Millbrae to assist on emergency calls for service. The department will return to a traditional patrol schedule in order to provide a greater number of officers on the street and to minimize the impact that losing three officers has on the public. This traditional schedule will achieve a staffing level that provides at least one officer above minimum staffing levels 70% of the time. However, this schedule will no longer provide overlapping coverage during our peak times, such as Friday and Saturday nights. The scheduling change will also have an adverse effect on the impact on the personal life for most of our officers. The officers recognize the responsibility the department has in providing public safety, and the officers understood without complaint that I had no alternative but to resort to this schedule. The elimination of three officers does not provide the department with the needed flexibility when a leave or vacancy occurs. The last contract negotiations that brought the department to the market range were critical in retaining our employees that we have today. Should the department have to backfill a patrol position, I soon will have to use an officer in a specialized position such as investigations, community policing, or a school resource officer in order to maintain frontline law enforcement services to our community. As you know, last year, the Samatéo Union High School District ceased its contribution to the school resource officer position, leaving this officer fully funded by the city. In March of this year, the department was notified that budget cuts from the Samatéo County Probation Department eliminated the probation officer on our high school campuses. This past school year, Cappuccino High School, Peninsula High School, and Parkside Middle School generated over 200 calls for service. Because the loss of the probation officer will certainly increase the need for an officer on campus, it was decided to retain the school resource officer position as a priority. Our community policing efforts include handling ongoing nuisance complaints and attempting to work on long-term resolutions. Some examples that we worked on last year include working with the city attorney's office and the San Francisco International Airport to address the chronic neighborhood complaints related to limousines. We also worked on chronic complaints related to vehicle vendors, and in addition, we worked with Samatéo County service groups to get assistance for homeless individuals, many of whom suffer from substance abuse issues and who are often the subject of police and fire calls for service. We have expanded our outreach to the community, including PTA presentations, community meetings on gang prevention and awareness, and partnering with nonprofit and faith-based organizations in preventing youth violence. Reductions in personnel extend beyond the three police officers. The department will eliminate the executive assistant and one public safety dispatcher. The void in dispatch will be covered by an increased use in per diem personnel and utilizing the dispatch capability of one of our police clerks. The command staff has taken on additional clerical tasks, and this is also supplemented by the use of a police clerk to make up the loss for the executive assistant position. In order to mitigate the loss of these positions, we have applied for grant funding for two police officers and one public safety dispatcher under the federal stimulus package. Also, we were recently notified that another grant from the Office of Traffic Safety has received tentative approval. This will provide $78,000 for driving under the influence and speed enforcement that will supplement our ability to provide traffic safety to the community. We were able to use Justice Assistance Grant funding to cover $50,000 in future crime lab expenditures that would have otherwise come from our general fund. We were able to deploy one officer to the county gang intelligence unit and receive $90,000 in salary reimbursement, in addition to the expertise the officer will have when he returns from that assignment. Our administrative sergeant is also temporarily assigned to the county gang task force, and this reflects our commitment to reduce crime associated with gangs, and this also satisfies our commitment to work in partnership with our county law enforcement agencies. We'll continue to partner with allied agencies and explore those areas where we can consolidate and share services to reduce our expenditures. The department will continue to manage its resources, and as our mission to providing safety to this community is paramount, I would like to thank each member of the San Bruno Police Department for their unwavering commitment to our mission. I have spoken to the city manager regarding our long-term ability to sustain our level of service with fewer personnel. The city manager has added additional funding to allow the department into, which will allow us to go right into an immediate over-hire situation if we can project a vacancy. This is necessary to minimize the impact an officer vacancy would have on the department. I have instructed staff to monitor the impact of the budget cuts and to manage the unintended consequences. I will report back to you with specific feedback about any adverse impact, and I will provide you with recommendations for modifications that are necessary. As the manager mentioned in her presentation, a number of vacancies happen to fall disproportionately on the police department. The city manager shares my concerns about our ability to maintain long-term these vacancies, and my hope would be that when vacancies occur in other positions throughout the city, some consideration would be given to the restoration of storing, restoring one or more positions in the police department. And I would be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council at this point? Thank you, chief. So, here from Chief A, Fire Department.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, good evening. What I plan to do is give you a general overview of the department and then get into the specific budget reduction measures by the fire department. The core mission of the department is to provide protection, health, life, and property through programs in fire prevention, public education, advanced life support, community preparedness, and fire suppression activities. Over the past two years, the department has downsized 2.5 positions through shared services opportunities. Our shared services agreement continues to work well. Our BCs oversee the daily operations of each shift and provide command presence at significant incidents. We have integrated the shared BCs' responsibilities to include specific assignments. Specifically, one of the BCs has the responsibility of facilities, which in this past year, he's worked on both of the two fire station projects going on right now. One BC has the administrative responsibilities and is currently working on formulating a combined standard operating procedures manual, and the other is in charge of department operations, including communications and such as that kind of thing. We also share a shared training chief of four agencies and an ALS supervisor. From an operational standpoint, we staff three pieces of frontline apparatus with two reserve engines. Each engine is staffed with a minimum of one fire captain and two firefighters, with at least one of those personnel being a fire paramedic. Our prevention bureau is staffed with a fire marshal and fire captain. This has allowed us to expand our inspection services to include annual inspections of all auto repair shops and all restaurants. Total staffing for the department amounts at 33.5 positions. Call volume for the department has continued to increase over the past five years, mostly in the area of EMS. Engine Company 51 was the second busiest engine company in the county last year. Total call volume for the department was 3,870 calls, just an average over 10 calls per day. This was an increase in call volume of 13% as compared to 2007, and EMS calls account for approximately 66% of the total call volume. As a member of the California Mutual Aid Agreement, we sent injuries from nine separate incidents last year, ranging from Humboldt County to San Diego County. These responses had quite an impact on our overtime budget, but these funds are reimbursed from the state, so that it's actually a cost neutral to the city. The budget appropriation for the department is almost 80% in personnel-related costs, roughly 5% in supplies and services, and 15% in other charges such as internal services, county services, interdepartmental charges, and reserve contribution. Obviously, the personnel costs are comparatively larger in the fire department than other city departments. As we prepared our budget, the first reductions were made to the supplies and equipment accounts. Staff training was reduced to allow only mandatory training requirements, such as paramedic licensing expenses and other required certifications. Meetings and conferences were essentially zeroed out. Staff identified an opportunity to save on cleaning charges of personal protective equipment by use of the sharing of cost of purchasing an extractor with Millbrae to do the cleaning in-house. We currently spend about $6,000 a year sending our turnouts out to be cleaned by a special To me, that's exorbitant if we could do it in-house. The cost of an extractor is probably, is about $14,000, and my proposal would be to share the cost with Millbrae and to designate one station to do the cleaning assignment as such. In that event, we actually saved money after the first year. We have decided to defer our fire hose replacement program by just replacing damaged hose this year. Another area of reduction was in our apparatus maintenance fund, which was reduced by $10,000. My feeling is the apparatus is in good condition, and our mechanics have an excellent preventive maintenance program. The only caution here is we have a major repair, such as transmission or motor failure, we could exceed the authorized budget. We made some smaller budget reductions on other accounts, amounting to about $38,000. A note to the city council that we deferred the purchase of the fire engine as part of last January's budget measures, and I plan on discussing that with the city manager sometime near the first of the year. The additional budget reduction target for the department was $125,000 in overtime. The only reasonable alternative was to look at the personnel budget, specifically the overtime budget. My initial solution was to use cross-staffing or brownouts, which initially reduces overtime by simply not staffing a piece of apparatus. The difference between cross-staffing and brownouts is with cross-staffing, we have the opportunity to send the right piece of equipment to the particular call as it comes in. The brownout, typically, you just brown out a piece of apparatus, whether it be an engine or the truck, and that means it's not in service. As the council recognizes- As the council recognizes, the Firefighters Association is not in favor of either of these options, I must admit that this is a service-level impact on the community, as that resource would not be available to respond. Another unit will respond as part of the deployment plan, but that unit will probably come from adjacent agency, which will obviously not be as quick response if our own units did respond. The Fire Association has been receptive to consider alternative measures to meet that obligation, and hopefully find one that does not include cross-staffing or brownouts or layoffs. This will involve meeting and conferred discussions with the city on those alternatives. I think the city manager might want to make a few further comments on this subject.
I wanted to echo what the chief said regarding the conversations that we've been conducting with the Firefighters Association and just give the city council some assurance that those conversations are proceeding in a very positive manner. There is discussion underway that would not only recognize the issue of compensation reduction that we'll be talking about further in this presentation towards the end, that is proposed to impact all employees, but we are also talking about alternative techniques for managing reduction to the overtime budget, or rather, managing reductions in a manner that would allow for the avoidance of cross-staffing or brownout via a credit back to the overtime budget, and specifically, the deployment of the individual who is currently assigned to the prevention division, both in our conversations with firefighters as well as with the chief, there may be an opportunity to present an alternative to you that would allow for redeployment of that person for some period of time and then thereby reduce the reliance on alternative methods of avoiding overtime cost while saving real money. So I'm very pleased with the spirit and with the effort and the initiative that the department has demonstrated in dealing with this very challenging issue.
And just to wrap up real quickly, the Fire Department will continue to look at other opportunities to reduce costs through additional shared services opportunities, joint purchasing opportunities, grants, and evaluating the next steps on the matrix consolidation study. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Okay, thank you. Community Development, Aaron Acton?
Thank you, and good evening. Several years ago, the city council added or upgraded several positions within the community development department due to the ongoing construction boom. Now with the decrease in construction starts, this year's budget proposes the elimination of a position both in the planning as well as in the building division, as well as a significant reduction in the contract services for both divisions as well. We'll begin with the planning side. On the planning side, the senior planner position is being proposed for elimination from the general fund budget, with only a half-time position left unfilled in redevelopment. Historically, the senior planner position has had three primary functions. The first is to manage the day-to-day activities of the associate and the assistant planner. The second is to process large application projects, and the third is to manage and implement long-range planning projects. With the decrease in large projects, there just isn't the same demand for project management as there was several years ago. However, there is still demand for other aspects of the position. Therefore, there will be short-term impacts associated with eliminating the position, which include an overall delay in implementation and long-range plans. As the city manager noted, and as the council knows well, the general plan was adopted for the first time in two decades, in over two decades, and with the adoption of the plan, hundreds of new policies and programs were adopted and need to be implemented. Some of, there will be a delay in implementation of some of these policies and programs with the elimination of this position. The same will hold true with the transit corridor plan, which will also have many policies and programs that come out of that planning process. The second is an overall longer review time for single-family home applications. This includes the review associated with building permit applications. Another long-range planning project that's ongoing right now is the residential design guidelines, and one thing that is coming out of the subcommittee of the residential design guidelines is applying those guidelines to building permit applications. Currently, planners only really look at the zoning code as it relates to larger planning commission applications, the ones that go to architectural review or use permit to the planning commission. These residential design guidelines would be proposed to impact every single addition that goes on and every single remodel to the exterior that goes on in San Bruno. So there would be a slight delay associated with those applications, as well as use permit applications and architectural view applications with the elimination of the senior planner position. Those are just two short-term impacts. The longer-term impacts cannot be fully realized at this time. One such impact could be what the possible delay in implementation of economic development policies would be on the long-term fiscal health of the city when we're not able to implement those on a day-to-day basis. As the year progresses, I would recommend we analyze how the senior planner position, budgeted at 50% within redevelopment, could best be used. Once the transit corridor plan is adopted, there will be critical policies and programs that need to be adopted. That should be the point that we look at this and how redevelopment funds could be used to create a senior planner position which would most effectively implement these policies. More should be known later on this year as the transit corridor plan progresses. Now, on the building side, we have seen a substantial decrease in building permit revenues, and it's primarily due to the lack of a large project coming to fruition within the current fiscal year. It is also due to a downturn in the economy, and what we've seen is not necessarily a huge decrease in the number of permits, but especially for residential projects, we've seen the decrease in the size of projects. So where people were adding three bedrooms and a second-story addition two, three years ago, we're now seeing them having smaller projects simply remodeling their, remodeling their homes. So that equals a decrease in total building permit revenues. However, there has been a slight decrease in the overall, the number of overall permits as well. This has not yet translated, though, to a substantial reduction in building permit inspection services, and now this is because the way building permits work, you're actually doing the work of building permits that were done in years past. So currently, for instance, the SNK project, although our building inspectors are out there on a daily basis, that revenue was actually seen in prior years. We've also seen an increase in the number of contractors who may not be as qualified bidding and proposing and getting lower, the lower bids, so our building inspection services have to be focused on those as well. However, due to the decreased amount in plan checks, the plan check engineer position is proposed for elimination, as well as over $200,000 in consultant fees when compared to the '08-'09 budget. This is in addition to the senior building inspector position that was eliminated during the last budget cycle. And although the plan check engineer position was never failed, never filled, the position was backfilled on a full-time basis with temporary help over the last several years. Some of the immediate impacts that we felt because of the loss of this position is once again in overall longer wait times for customers at the front counter. Now there will be only two front-counter techs, there's one less person to help these residents, and the CD techs will also have to rely on voicemail rather than able to answer every phone call that comes in. There'll also be less plan checks done over the counter. This is especially true with more complicated additions and remodels. As the front-counter techs will not be able to do those, those will have to be sent out of City Hall to be done, and that will once again translate to longer, longer times for people to get their remodel permits approved. And finally, there will also be a delay in code enforcement and administrative work. Currently, our CD techs are the ones who do the administrative work, send out administrative sites, set up the appeal hearings, and there will be a delay in that as the CD techs are concentrating on front-counter work. In conclusion, I'd like the council to note that overall, construction happens in cycles, and although we are at a lower point in the cycle right now, in the not-too-distant future, construction will increase again. And while the senior building inspector position was eliminated last year, and the plan check engineer position is proposed to be eliminated this year, there will be a demand for these services that these positions supply in future construction cycles. Fortunately, though, when these, when these, when this occurs, the building revenues will be up, and there will be funds to support these senior-level positions. In the meantime, we'll be able to look at and get a better picture of what the long-term consequences are of eliminating these positions, and we'll also look at each member of the community development department to look at what services their position actually deliver and look at how they could best deliver those services. So I could take any questions at this time.
Through the chair.
Ken?
During the boom, during the boom, was the planning staff the same as it is now? In numbers?
During the boom, there was no, I, my position, I was, I was serving as a senior planner at that time, so there was an assistant planner, an associate planner, as well as a senior planner. We also had a project manager on staff at about 20 to 30 hours a week. Currently, we just have an assistant planner, associate planner, and a project manager for about 14 hours a week.
Okay, so what I'm having a hard time is now that things are slower, it would seem that it would, it would sort of even out, but you're saying repeatedly that things are going to be delayed, that we may experience delays in processing projects.
I would say that the primary difference is during the housing boom, we were really a processing department, we weren't a planning department. And the fundamental shift that we made as a city is that we paid attention to these long-range plans, and the planning doesn't actually occur, I mean, the planning process occurs while you're trying, when, as you're adopting these plans, but the real planning occurs when you're implementing these plans. So while the housing boom happened, we didn't have a new general plan, we didn't have a transit corridor plan, and we didn't have a, we didn't have residential design guidelines. So what we've seen is our planning department shift from being a processing department to also being a planning department. And so that's balancing those two with less staff will result in some delayed review time.
Any other questions? Ken? Thank you.
Thanks.
Here from Public Service Director, Eddie George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members. The community services department is made up of five divisions, one internal and four external, and our goal continues to be to provide municipal services to the highest level possible with the available resources. The building facilities division is the only internal division, serving all the custodial and facility maintenance functions within the city. The action proposed for the upcoming budget is to eliminate the additional cleaning contract for the floors and the window coverings. This was an item that was approved in the '08-'09 budget, although it was not enacted upon due to the, due to the economic condition, so we are talking about, or we are proposing that it be eliminated permanently. The impact of that would be additional wear and tear on the floorings and the window coverings and the potential to decrease the life of those items. In the library, circulation has increased 37% over the past six years, 10.5% this past year. This is a trend that is typical during tough economic times as the public turns more and more to the library for its services. The library and the city have also effectively utilized the constrained library space despite the new technologies and the needs of those technologies. Last year, there was a major project that was put on hold in light of a new facility. This year, grant funds will be used to address some of the ADA issues that will make the collection accessible to our entire community. Some of the other actions proposed for the 2009-10 budget for the library, the elimination of one library assistant position, the reduction in the part-time budget, and the reduction in support for Project Reed, a project that is conducted by the South San Francisco Library but serves the San Bruno community as well. The impacts of those library actions will be to close the library on Friday mornings. Our hope is to be able to stay open Friday afternoons, since many of the schoolchildren use the library for homework and computer services, but we would be talking about closing the library from 10 until 1:00 p.m. We would also, on all weekday mornings, be staffing the library with two library assistants rather than one librarian and one assistant. And these are the part-time positions in addition to the full-time staff that is already on duty. Some of these impacts will be offset at the counter. We are, we are put into the equipment budget funds to purchase a self-checkout machine so that the public can help themselves to some of the materials. It's, we do have a self-checkout machine right now, although it is not compatible with the, with the public library systems, security systems, so it's essentially non-functional. For the parks division, parks operation workload has increased by over 30 hours per week this past year with the addition of several landscaping areas, such as San Bruno Avenue, Medians, the railroad strip, Bay Shore Circle, Wells Hargo Bank site, the EVA near Summerfield, several of the pump stations, vegetation areas. The Medians recently approved along El Camino Real will be under the contract maintenance agreement for the next year, but will be maintained by city parks crews thereafter. In the '09-10 budget, it is proposed that, that one lead worker position is eliminated and that the clerical support for the parks division is reduced. The results of that will be over 2,000 hours of park maintenance that is decreased. We will, we will realign the parks maintenance employees into two crews rather than in three. There's a reduction of over $30,000 to parks for supplies, gasoline, utilities, communications, et cetera, and it will reduce our ability to handle tree inventory, work orders, maintenance requests from the public. The recreation and seniors division, combining the two momentarily, they're both very lightly staffed in comparison to other agencies on the peninsula. There's combined two managers and three supervisors positions. This staffing level ranks 19th out of 24 peninsula cities and 23rd out of 24th in terms, in ratio of programming staff to residents. We rank only above East Palo Alto in that area. The recreation and seniors divisions are also very reliant upon part-time staff to operate the programs. Proposed reductions will force staff to develop new ways to deliver those programs or eliminate some of them. The actions that are being put forward are a reduction in the part-time staff salaries, reduction in over $24,000 in operations such as printing and supplies. One of the reasons we are looking at the printing costs is we will be taking the recreation brochure schedule that you see on a regular basis. We will be taking that from four times per year to three times per year, just lengthening out the sessions of those, but that will save in both the printing and the postage costs. We're also talking about needing to increase the child-to-staff ratio for the vacation camps and the after-school programs, and we will be closing the recreation center on Sundays when there are no facility rentals going on. There may be a reduction in some of the programs, such as aquatics or in special events, and I would be happy to answer questions related to any of the divisions' budgets.
Questions from council at this point?
Through the chair. The staffing of the kids' programs and things, we subsidize that heavily, does it pay for itself? How does that work? Reducing staff, but there is a charge that people pay for those services.
And those are reduced, those are subsidized to some extent, specifically on the after-school programs. The after-school, the vacation camps do pay directly for, for the, the direct operating costs, including the leaders, although if we, if we do reduce the staffing level or if we change the staffing level a little bit, it makes the programs that much more profitable for the city, or I shouldn't use the term profitable. It does not cover its overhead, but it covers more of the overhead when you look at the permanent staff and some of the other administrative areas that are put towards those programs.
Have you seen a big increase in enrollment?
It's about the same as last year, although this, this year, we are anticipating still a larger summer camp program due to the fact that the, the San Bruno Park School District is not operating a summer school.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Ken?
Anticipating in front by closing, I see you've reduced the swim, swim school by two weeks, so we've gone back. I think we extended it a few years back, and now we're, I would, tell me about what, what increases we've had over the last few years. I mean, is that going to be, pose a problem? Are we going to turn away kids?
That was really more towards the, the adult programs for the, for the... That was really more towards the adult programs for the aqua exercise programs, not for the kids, learn-to-swim programs or the drop-in programs.
Okay, but we are closing, we're going back to closing before, or at Labor Day or before Labor Day?
It's a proposal that we're still working through in terms of the budget, in terms of how the part-time reductions are brought forth amongst all the divisions. But it's something that we're proposing, but no final decision's been made.
Through the chair.
Thank you.
Just clarification, I know you mentioned the library proposed for three hours. You said Sunday at the Recreation Center, that I believe, if I'm correct, it's nine to one currently, which was reduced from prior reductions from nine to five. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
So we're talking four hours on Sunday?
Right, and if there's a facility rental going on, then somebody still would be watching the counter and accepting registrations. But if no rental was going on in the building, then we would close the office.
And then, so the printing obviously went down significantly because obviously it won't be a quarterly, it'll be three times. In the proposed budget, it stays still quarterly with the reduction, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Eddie.
Through the back to the city manager.
Lastly, and Jim may have some additional comments. We have one additional section of the general fund operations that we're choosing tonight to review in summary. This includes the finance departments, the Human Resources Department, the City Attorney's Office, the City Clerk's Office, the City Council's budget, and the budget for the City Manager's Office. Internal administrative operations that are largely covered by those various departments and offices is really the glue that holds our organization together. That glue is the work that we on the inside of the organization do to translate the City Council's policy and priorities into action and to assure that frontline staff through all of the direct service delivery departments, police, fire, community services, community development, and others, that those staffs and those departments overall are able to concentrate and direct their intention solely to the delivery of frontline services. Human Resources provides in the background recruitment selection and benefits administration among a variety of other services to all departments. Our legal services monitor, manage, avoid, and handle liability for the city across the board. Financial management, budget preparation, is a critical component of all of the work that we do in every department. And obviously, the City Council's budget, the City Clerk's budget, and that of my office are similarly critical to providing the overall policy guidance and implementing and managing the operations of the policy and the executive level of the organization. The primary impacts to services within these various departments and parts of our organization are reflected in a few of our line item accounts. Those include primarily the contract services. In the Finance Department and in the HR Department, we've eliminated contract expenditures for both the preparation of the annual audit as well as for the provision of services to support negotiations. We've also reduced by negotiation with, directly with the service provider, services that are provided in our benefits administration area and have achieved a very good result through the efforts of the director in that area. As the City Council is very well aware, our city attorney on a regular basis aggressively and actively manages all of our legal obligations and activities of the city and in particular expenditures related to outside counsel. The slide that you have in front of you identifies the specific reductions to that line item and the amounts that are included in this budget across all of the various departmental budgets. In the City Council's budget, we took the opportunity to reduce a A-line item that's called community promotions. This is an area where the City Council has historically budgeted an amount that is intended, but frankly, in the last several years, has not been fully expended to provide support to other organizations and activities within the community that are not directly delivered by city forces. Again, because that line item has not been fully utilized and because there is essentially very little cost in the City Council's budget, we felt that that was an appropriate recommendation as part of this overall across-the-board strategic reduction program. As the Finance Director indicated before, although there were also reductions to the City Clerk's Office comparable to those that are occurring across the board in supplies and training accounts that have impacted the City Manager's Office, City Clerk's Office, and all others, the municipal election cost needs to be factored into this year's budget. And as the council knows, we don't carry an amount in the even-numbered years simply because an election is conducted in odd-numbered years. We only budget that in odd-numbered years. So unfortunately, there is a spike, and as this Administrative Services Director indicated earlier, this is the only area in the city where you see even a small comparative increase if you look at the proposed oh-nine, ten expenditures compared to the budgeted and actual expenditures for oh-eight, oh-nine. This is a very, very significant result and one that has not come without obvious challenges and issues that you've heard from the other department directors tonight and throughout our presentation. The last item of reduction that I wanted to talk specifically with the City Council about, and is one that creates a particular impact in our organization and directly to the individual employees who provide the valued services that we produce for the public. And in talking to you about this, and this item is an item that is still under discussion with the employee bargaining units and is shown in our budget as a negative expenditure item in the non-department section of the budget. This proposal has not yet been incorporated into each of the departmental operational That is a proposed furlough affecting all city employees and effectively resulting in a reduction in compensation. Before I go to the details of that, I want to remind the City Council that this budget was built around the specific City Council direction that there be no salary and benefit increases in the current year as well as in the coming year. So that direction has been strictly adhered to, and we are actively in the process of negotiating bargaining unit agreements because they're all in some stage of expiration. That includes that very specific provision. So again, where we might have anticipated a modest across-the-board increase in total operating costs in a budget year compared to the prior year, that situation has totally reversed itself. And one of the significant but unseen aspects of that is the fact that there are absolutely no across-the-board salary and benefit changes incorporated in this budget. A modest amount is included to address a portion of the anticipated increase in the medical premium cost, which will occur and is as yet unknown but will occur effective October first. So moving on to the last item in our presentation, and that is the need to make additional adjustments to compensation via a furlough. I am currently in active discussion with each of the employee bargaining units about this issue and am proposing and discussing with them the reduction of compensation by the equivalent of two point three one percent for non-safety employees, which is equivalent to six days of work and would result, or would be implemented in a manner that would close city offices and non-safety operations for those additional, for an additional six days during the year. For safety employees, I'm proposing the equivalent of fifty percent or three days of reduction at the percentage amount of one point one five percent. Safety employees who are required to provide service on a twenty-four-hours-a-day, seven-days-a-week basis would be expected to work their regular schedules, would not receive additional time off, and public safety facilities would not be closed. By straight-of-the-board, one point one five percent reduction in compensation would occur as an equivalent comparative furlough technique. As the City Council is aware, we have worked hard in making this difficult choice to maintain the basic values of this organization, which include equitable treatment of employees regarding, regardless of where the money comes from that pays for their salaries, and to provide, to identify and to acknowledge and address the real operational considerations that are different and in some cases unique in various places and various parts of our organization. So while a one-size-fits-all approach does not work, we've worked very hard to assure both an adequate explanation as well as a reasonably equitable implementation of a furlough approach to making the final, closing the final gap in this budget. Overall, to the general fund, savings would amount to approximately seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Again, facilities would be closed, and the public would be expected to experience some impact from that, although it will be our intent to minimize that by carefully selecting days when we would not anticipate a particularly high level of activity for any specific reason. Lastly, the line item, this negative expenditure amount in the non-departmental budget includes a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is the final, final remaining amount to close the revenue-to-expenditure gap. That is anticipated to be resolved by the, by providing encouragement or incentive for separation from the organization, by monitoring and managing vacancies and potentially proposing to you the addition of, the additional elimination of positions if vacancies present themselves within the next near period of time and/or layoff if that becomes necessary. In producing this budget and in presenting it to you tonight, I hope that you have heard both about how seriously we have taken your direction and about the difficulty that we anticipate to experience in continuing what we consider to be a minimally necessary level of services to the public. Unfortunately, the choices that we've had to make in recommending, in developing our recommendations to you have been difficult ones and ones that we hope that you understand and appreciate, that they represent, and I hope that you can see the continuing commitment of our staff to essentially do what it takes to make this work. I can clearly recommend to you and assert that our city staff clearly understand the importance of the public trust and the service that is theirs and ours, our responsibility. Our employees in this process, not only through the Budget Working Committee but across the board, have demonstrated both their concern about the current economic circumstances as well as their real understanding of the need for tangible cost reduction, reducing changes, both to our organization as well as to the way that we deliver services, including reductions to compensation. I can't speak more highly of the commitment that demonstrates and hope that you will recognize that while this budget may include things that are even difficult for you to approve, that it is the best that we have been able to come up with over a number of months of very focused and very diligent work. With that, we would like to end our presentation and ask for any discussion, any questions or comments from the City Council.
Just on the last slide, you indicated that the furloughs would, for the general fund, amount to a savings in excess of seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars?
I accidentally said a way too big number.
Okay. So the two hundred and seventy-seven is correct.
Through the chair.
Whoa, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Thank you.
Through the chair, I have a question, and maybe it's really simple on behalf of the public, but when you look at this, they say some personnel and public safety, three days, they work, but they reduce by one point one five. Other employees don't work, six days, they reduce by two point three one. Why not, or what are the ramifications, and how does it happen, protocol-wise and mechanically-wise, if you just cut salaries overall instead of this nickel-and-dime, two hours closed here, eight hours closed there, and trying to do all that maneuvering of furloughs and personnel here and there? Is that something that has to be negotiated? Can it be mandated? Tell us.
Reduction of compensation in any form, whether it's a straight cut or it's a furlough type of implementation, requires concurrence through the negotiation process. At this time, we have been discussing, as I indicated, a furlough, one that demonstrates the real challenge to the organization by including the reduction to services. It is possible to do it another way, and that's certainly at your direction, that is certainly something that we would take back and consider as part of the budget balancing strategy.
Okay. I would like to see it looked at, just simply because the alternative is letting people go, which we're trying to avoid.
Connie, first off, I appreciate all the city staff has done, including the employees and the working group. I mean, you've really, I think everyone that works for the city has a, today has a much better understanding of what's involved in the budget and where the revenues come from in the city. The only thing I have a problem with is that I'm looking at this on June eighth now, and the balancing of the budget on July first is based on a plan, and I'm not going to be comfortable adopting a budget that doesn't have solid agreement with it. I can't pass a budget and put a budget into place based on what might be negotiated. So I think we need to have alternatives and dates that if this isn't agreed upon by, you know, these cuts by a certain date, what are the alternatives and what, is it elimination or reduction of workforce? How do we guarantee that the budget we're passing is actually going to be there? Because negotiations can drag out for months. In the meantime, the dollars keep going out the door and the city keeps bleeding. We're in effect not passing a balanced budget if we don't have some surety of what those reductions are going to be.
Other questions from council?
Through the chair. Just on the last slide, again, just so that it's clear, when we say safety miscellaneous, we're not referring just to the miscellaneous bargaining unit. You're referring to all non-safety personnel on the two point three one?
That's correct. All non-safety.
Okay. And I would say too, at this stage, I'm not comfortable to go forward with the proposals as we have, whether I concur where they should be coming from or to what level for which department, until we have an opportunity to maybe hear from some more of the employees and the residents. Since this has just been made available, this is a lot to digest. So I'm still reserving my comments and other items for my comments and other items for next week.
Any other comments from council?
I'm going to use the word comfortable also. I understand and concur with the mayor and my colleagues have said, but it's not a comfortable time and it's not going to be comfortable for a while, but I appreciate all sides that are doing all they can, but I don't think the other shoe has dropped yet. We've experienced the last few years layoffs, we've experienced furloughs before, we're going to experience possibly more furloughs, and we're anticipating possible layoffs also. It's out of our control in many cases, and I think we've done a yeoman's job in trying to, you know, keep up without really affecting our residents. When we look at just a few hours here and there as far as a library or counter service or something, that's not really indicative of how bad things are. So I give a lot of credit to staff and to the employees, but we're by no means going to use the word comfortable for a while. Thank you.
Any members of staff or public that are here this evening want to address the council regarding the budget? Seeing that we'll adjourn until tomorrow night's regular City Council meeting at 7:00 here at the Senior Center, and from that meeting we will adjourn to the second study session on the budget which will be the 16th here at the Senior Center. Thank you.